It looks like we've got everybody here. At least from our staff, Stephanie, I believe, we're all here, which is great. Thank you, staff, for being available this afternoon. And I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, welcome to our 5:00 PM, May 18th, 2020 special meeting of the City Council. I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on Community Television Channel 25 and streaming on the city's website, cityofstancruz.com. All council members are participating in this meeting remotely. I want to thank the public for staying home to view today's City Council meetings. If you wish to comment on today's agenda item, call in at the beginning of the item using your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it is time for a public comment, sign on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak during public comment, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. You may hang up once you have commented on your item of interest. And I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Callan Tari Johnson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Cummings?
Yeah.
Holder?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Present.
And Mayor Myers.
Present. We do have one item, and Bonnie, I will have to ask you to, if you could possibly, I did not bring this down with me. Can I reverse order and do the proclamation at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, Bonnie?
Yeah, and I can email it to you.
Yeah, please email that to me. Thank you. Did not make it in my briefcase. Okay, we will go ahead and, our general business item first tonight, and this will be item number two on our agenda. And this is a item on Santa Cruz County Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, a strategic framework for addressing homelessness in Santa Cruz County. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by our staff, followed by additional presentation by our county colleagues, and then we will have questions from the council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Lee Butler, our Director of Planning and Community Development on homeless response. And tonight's discussion and action tonight would be to accept and file the final version of the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, a Strategic Framework for Addressing Homelessness in Santa Cruz. And so I'll turn this over to Lee, and I just also want to welcome Randy Morris and Robert Ratner from the County of Santa Cruz. And they will be doing the main part of the presentation tonight. And I just want to thank the council for being available tonight to share about this important framework that is important for everyone in our community, countywide, but also important for our planning efforts and our work regarding homelessness in the city. So Lee, you.
Thank you, Mayor Myers, and good evening, council members. I have the pleasure of introducing this evening Randy Morris at the county. He is the Director of Human Services. And Robert Ratner, who is the Housing for Health Director at the county. And we've been working with the county very closely for quite some time as they have developed their three-year strategic plan and six-month action plan. They'll talk to you about how their six-month plans will be rotating as they move through the three-year strategic plan process. And I just want to extend thanks to Robert and Randy, to the both of them, for the coordination that they've had on a regular basis. I think Randy's been with the county for a little bit, for a year, and Robert started about the same time that I started in my role. And we have had many, many meetings together, whether it's with the Two by Two Committees or the Homeless Action Partnership, our communities' continuum of care. Or just on a regular basis, we are trading emails and jumping on the phone and getting...
Thank you.
Okay, well.
So, Randy.
Okay, thank you. Well, back at you, Lee, for the partnership. It's been great working with you since you were assigned this lovely task by your city to address this vexing issue that it really is a humanitarian crisis, and I want to start with that. The human element of this is very serious, and in communities like Santa Cruz and many others where cost of living is high and this issue is pronounced. It really challenges the best of us, staff, myself included, and elected officials in city and county to navigate this. This is an issue that's profound, it's large, it's big. You know, and sometimes what we have control over is how we work together and not some of the bigger issues. And I just hope we can kind of lean into that, and I hope what you hear tonight helps give a frame for you to see how we're trying to maximize working together, because that's very challenging. Lee, that's impressive tracking. I want to be humble that I am the Human Services Director here for 15 months. I started one month BP before pandemic. And so my tenure here has been in the pandemic, and I'm getting used to these video meetings, which is unfortunate, I wish we could be in person. I'm going to just say a few introductory remarks. I'm really going to turn it over to Dr. Robert Ratner, who was hired, and as you also tracked, Lee, started in November. And I do want to make sure your constituents listening and your other staff on the phone, we did really do a community hire, and your city manager, Martine Bernal, was actually on the hiring panel that selected Robert. It was very important that we had city and community and county representatives. I want to just share a little bit about Human Services. Questions come, why county Human Services? If you do not know this, there is absolutely no mandate from the federal or state government about what the county's supposed to do around homelessness, nor any directive about what county operation is supposed to manage homelessness, and that is one issue that confounds cities, trying to figure out, who do I talk to at the county? And us counties don't even know, and we look to the state and fed, who's supposed to run this thing? So this county, like many counties in, avoided stepping up and taking on responsibility to really lean into this issue until our current CIO, Carlos Palacios, was appointed. This community before Carlos is not the only community where the county shied away from stepping into this rabbit hole, because once you get involved, you are engaged for the long run. So I want to recognize and I appreciate Martine Bernal, your manager, city manager, who's given me a lot of history of what it's been like before Carlos, when there was the county not being very responsive. And even since Carlos, we have a lot of work to do, but we're still trying to making up for a lot of years of not being a partner to you all. And Robert and I recognize that, we've inherited that. By just a touch of introduction, county Human Services has three main operating divisions, and the fourth, which was added to our plate by the decision of our Board of Supervisors and our county administrator, Carlos, is what you'll hear from today, and that's Robert, the Director of our Housing for Health Division. But the other three are the Foster Care Division, the Employment and Benefits Divisions, programs like Workforce Development Board, Medi-Cal, CalWorks, CalFresh Food Stamps, and also in Aging and Disability Programs like IHSS, NAEP. Funny to know that those are the programs I run, that in partnership with the Health Office that runs Mental Health Services and Environmental Health Services, together we sort of create the safety net in county. And that's the reason why our CIO wanted this office to be not in the CIO's office that administrate a pub, but really embedded in where the services get provided at county level. And that's why the office was transferred to us in November. So now to get ready to go up, Robert, I want to remind your council, I would be very impressed if you remembered this with the volume of duties you face, that back November 10th, and I had to go look at my calendar myself, I was in front of your council on Zoom with my colleague, the Assistant County Administrator, Elisa Benson, on November 10th. Were in front of you to share what was a draft of what today is a final plan. The very short version of a very long story is when Carlos was appointed CIO, created his strategic plan, said we need to lean into addressing the issue of homelessness is getting worse, and a national consulting forum called Focus Strategies was hired, and it was really under my colleague, Elisa Benson's leadership. In partnerships with cities and counties to lead to that draft plan that was presented to your council on November 10th. We shared with your council then that we would be back in front of you at a date future, which is now today, that we would work with your city manager's office, as Lee mentioned in his introduction, very closely with Mayor Myers and Vice Mayor Brunner and Mayor Cummings, so we worked with you prior to the transition of you from mayor, to work on that draft to make sure that what we put in front of you is really representative of cities' interests. I do want to take a minute to share with your council, all of you and the public watching, what is not being asked of you tonight. That's almost more important, because every time the topic of homelessness comes in front of a legislative body, it brings lots of people concerned about what decisions might get made. It is not a question tonight of any city budget priorities, purposing any city budget money anywhere, any policy priorities, picking or choosing one priority over another, or any citing issues. None of that is part of what we're talking about today. Rather, this is what is often referred to as a collective impact model. Let's get all the stakeholders who are interested in a vexing, complicated issue like this to have one common way to look at the issue, to think about the issue, to talk about the issue, so that we maximize collaboration, minimize confusion, and finger pointing. So hopefully that makes sense, that I think it's called Accept and File, Mayor Myers. So hopefully this is a softball, which is normally not what you have in front of you when the issue of homelessness is in front of you. It's really just asking us to use this framework, and Robert and I are happy to be back in front of your council when there are decision points that do involve budget and policy, where there's partnership between county and city. I want to end my comments before turning over to Robert to share what in my sort of, towards the end of my career, I've been in the field of Health and Human Services for 30, I can't believe it. I'm finding there are fewer and fewer mentors, and I'm one of the more seasoned ones, so I guess I have to lean into that role. I have seen moments like this in my career in Health and Human Services where there's a tremendous amount of human suffering, human beings that were responsible for, are not getting served well, and there's a lot of finger pointing and frustration, and not enough resources to do what we want to do. In county government, and I believe this is the case for city government, when you're dealing with an issue that's this historic, this complex, that really is a byproduct of decades of public policy at the federal and state level, and some local, we are in a moment where the city and county today cannot solve this. What we are in a moment is where the federal government and the state government are starting to recognize, and if you haven't read the Governor's May Revice that came out, there is more and more recognition that the federal government, state government want to invest money in this, because this issue is a national crisis, and it's particularly pronounced in California, and it's particularly pronounced where cost of living is high, like in places like Santa Cruz. So I have seen this over and over in my career, and I'm just going to share, take it or leave it. When the federal government, state government starts thinking about investing in solutions to issues like homelessness, they often choose to pilot money. They don't just give the bank out there. They want to see and strategically invest and see where things are working, and too many times, I have seen that the federal government and state government is hesitant to invest pilot money where collaboration is bad. So I think we have all, in our myopic seats, spent a lot of time putting energy into trying to figure out why the other party isn't doing their job, or has the money that we don't have. And you know what? We can go there. But what I would really invite us to all think about is, does that position us well or poorly for future potential investment opportunities? And both county and city have spent time writing editorials, writing talking points about why the other is the problem. We could go there, but I think we should invest more time and energy in talking about where we have common ground, which is, none of us have the resources, none of us have the solutions, and let's work to position ourselves for this new $12-plus billion that the state's putting out, and a presidential administration and federal senate that might want to invest more. I think we have the beginnings of a good plan. The last many months have been very positive, on the heels of a lot of challenges, and I hope we can keep that trajectory going. And I'm going to end by, not on video, but I'm going to call out your police and fire chief. There is also a growing recognition that cities are bearing a profound burden in California because there is a lack of services. We can spend time, not tonight unless you have questions, about why we are not funded appropriately to deliver those services, but we share the challenge, financial and policy crisis. So let's work on it together, let's go after funding together, and I hope what Robert's going to present now will provide a framework that's agreeable to you all. And I will stay on board here, and Robert and I are happy to answer any questions of your council, and we'll follow your lead, Mayor Myers, on how you do public comment, if we're supposed to respond or not. I know different cities do it differently, but hopefully, well, you kind of catch the vibe of what we're trying to get. I hear that word here a lot, so I'm trying to catch that vibe, and I'll turn it over to Robert.
Thank you so much, Randy. Great, great opening comments for us all to think about tonight. Robert, welcome.
Thank you all for having me. I'm really looking forward to getting to work with all of you on the issue of making sure everyone has a home, which is a fundamental part of our framework, working together to build a coalition, as Randy alluded to, to make sure everyone has a home that's safe and healthy to live in. I'm going to pull up some slides that will give you all an overview of the framework that is on your agenda item today to accept and file, and then we want to make sure we have time for questions and discussion with council members and the public. So pull up slides for everybody. All right.
Yeah, it's in, it's in presentation format. Robert, if you want to flip, switch it.
There we go. All right.
Oh, hang on one second. Still there in presentation mode.
All right, let me try to share differently.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's better.
Thank you for letting me know. So the framework is to cover our work together over a three-year period, January 2021 through January 2024. And we refer to the framework as Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, intentionally, because our perspective in doing this work is that we need to bring people, communities, safe and healthy for everyone, and housing is really an integral part of that. Randy and I both work in the County Human Services Department, and Randy spoke to the role of Human Services in our community, but we also work closely with other county departments, particularly the Health Department, and citizens' interests and stakeholders. Lee alluded to the fact that in our community, we have something called the Contume of Care, which is a fairly mandated entity that is supposed to bring people together to address homelessness. And in Santa Cruz, that entity has been called the Homeless Action Partnership. So our new division is helping to provide staff support for the Homeless Action, and we'll be doing that in an ongoing way. So this is an outline of what I was going to cover in the presentation today. Randy alluded to the fact that we presented to, I wasn't here, but Elisa Benson and Randy presented an initial draft of the framework to the City Council in November, and we collected feedback and made some changes to the original document, given over the framework. Talked about how some of the stories that we used to describe the issue of housing and homelessness may impact our ability to make progress. And then share some initial analyses around funding gaps, if we were to make the investments that this framework calls for, where are we in terms of resources to get to the goals? Then highlight some of the elements of what we're trying to do in this first six-month period, which is from January through June 30th. And as Lee alluded to, the framework calls for us to develop collaborative six-month plans over the three-year period, so we're in that first six-month period right now. So some of the changes we made based on the feedback we received were, the original document was very text-heavy and didn't have a lot of graphics, so please make it easier to read and understand. We made some effort, and we shortened it and used a lot more graphics. There was strong feedback that we need to spend more time talking about the major contributor to homelessness being the gaps between the cost of housing in our community and the incomes that people have. And then how we work together to close that gap is going to be really critical to addressing homelessness. There was another point that the community members raised, is that it's a lot easier to prevent someone from losing their home than to try to help someone get back into housing. So we need to figure out how do we shift our efforts and energy to preventing people from losing their homes as part of the overall framework. The original draft, in many people's minds, didn't speak enough to healthcare issues and how they can contribute. Many people in the community called out mental health and substance use. Sometimes behavioral health is the other term to choose, issues in how they can contribute to difficulties in people getting and keeping housing. So we added some more information about that in the framework, and highlighted it's really important that we include improvements in how we connect housing with behavioral health services as part of our overall collective impact effort. There was a request that we talked about how we're going to address encampments and problems that come up when people are unhoused and are trying to live in an unsheltered situation. And that's been added into our framework, and we certainly have work to do with our city partners and others on that issue. And then another recommendation that really came out is include the voice of people who've lived through or are experiencing homelessness and being part of, taking their perspective into account as we try to address this issue together with them. The framework calls for some numerical goals, so this slide shows the Santa Cruz County point in time count of the number of households experiencing homelessness, and then the goal to get to by 2024. We heard feedback that some people in the community felt like our goals were not ambitious enough, and some felt like they were not realistic. So I think we're in the middle space between being too ambitious and not ambitious enough. We're aiming for a decrease in the number of unsheltered people and households experiencing homelessness, cutting that in half in time period, and then cutting by one-fourth the number of households and people experiencing homelessness overall in the community. And the framework asks us to think about, how do we do this work together around some guiding principles? And they're highlighted here on this slide. One that I continue to forget to change, but it says date-driven, it's also time-bound and data-driven, so using information to make good decisions, specific timeframes for us to complete activities, and documenting those in a transparent way. County-wide in scope, really thinking about this issue across the whole community, and making sure we address the differences that are present geographically and with different subgroups, but really thinking county-wide system, making sure that we're coming up with actionable steps and things we can do to make progress, focusing on the people who are really impacted by living without homes, and incorporating them into the work, so having a person-centered approach. Looking at equity and inclusion, as we think about how do we approach this issue? If you look at the data on who's more likely to experience homelessness, it's groups that are often overly stigmatized, and who often are impacted by long-term historical systemic forms of discrimination and isolation, so we really need to account for that in our work. And then the systems approach alludes to the fact that we can't just invest in one area without investing, or thinking about how investing in that area links with other parts of the overall effort. So for example, if we just invest in outreach, but there's nowhere for outreach providers to connect people to, we haven't really used a systematic approach, we haven't been very strategic. So we have to really think about investing in ways that help people prevent loss of their homes, or if they're currently without a home, how do we help them go from an outreach connection to a permanent home? So along that path, we need to make sure we're investing in all those different strategies and interventions. Which the material in the, has recommendations from the framework around some targets for us. These targets are based on some analyses that Focus Strategies, this outside consulting group that came to do some work in Santa Cruz, they looked at our data from something called the County Homeless Management Information System, and if we could move in the direction they recommend, they think we can get to those targets that they alluded to earlier, of reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness by a quarter. So it calls for us to increase the number of our temporary housing beds from 440, and this was before the pandemic. We've significantly increased our temporary housing, which includes shelter and transitional housing as a result of the pandemic, but when the pandemic funds are not available anymore, we're going to go back to, maybe even we'll see if we don't invest more in temporary housing, we'll see a reduction from that 440. But it calls for us to have a goal of 600 temporary housing beds. Rapid rehousing is a particular strategy that combines services with some funding to help people move into housing and pay rent for a defined period of time, not ongoing, but it helps people transition back into a home and increase their income to be able to hold on to that housing. And then permanent supportive housing is deeply affordable housing, typically seniors and people with disabilities, coupled with some services to help them move into those housing opportunities, but also to support them to maintain that housing over the long run. So in addition to building out that capacity, the framework calls for us to reduce the length of time people are in the different programs above, and increase the number of people that were actually able to help program into permanent housing. So if we can accomplish all those things, we can get to our goals. I do want to say this model that Focus Strategies came up with is one potential model for getting to those goals. I think the core thing that they're trying to get us to do through the recommendations is monitor our progress over time, looking at data, seeing if we make investments in one area, are we getting the kinds of outcomes that we want? And if not, making adjustments so we can get to the ultimate of helping as many people as possible get back into their own homes. Some of the key areas for action in the framework are, and Randy alluded to this, as collective impact, I think of it as building a coalition or developing our community capacity to respond together to this issue. So that's one of our key tasks in our new division in partnership with the City of Santa Cruz and others. Preventing homeless, increasing connections between people who are unhoused and those who are able to provide support and connections to resources to get, can get people back on a path to permanent housing, and thriving again in their lives, and then expanding our permanent housing capacity overall. The framework calls for us to get to some of the root causes of, and we call out four in particular. One is the housing affordability gap that I alluded to, the gap between the incomes of people in our community and the cost of housing. That's bold, faced on the slide, because it's a number-one issue that was called out in our community information gathering process. We really need to lean in and deal with that issue. But now there are things on here, health issues and how they impact people's ability to access and keep housing, making sure that people have supportive connections. There's a term that's often used called self-sufficiency, and I think as human beings, none of us are fully self-sufficient, so we all need some level of supportive connections to stay safe and in home and to thrive. So how do we help create positive supportive connections for people that may have lost them? And then another contributor to homelessness, I think, is a sense of loss of hope and purpose, both at the collective level, as a society, and us as leaders, elected officials. If we don't believe we can make a difference, if we don't have a sense of where we're going and a sense of purpose, we're certainly not going to get there. And that can manifest in the experiences of people who are unhoused. If they, if they don't have hope and a sense that there's meaning and purpose for lives, then it's much more difficult to get them back on a path to permanent housing. So we all need to work on the holding on to hope and a sense of purpose as we tackle this issue together. I wanted to share a few slides just to give a more in-depth perspective on the housing affordability gap. And this slide comes from a report by the California Housing Partnership Coalition. It's a statewide group that occasionally does report cards on housing affordability gaps at different communities, in different communities. So what this slide shows to me is that in Santa Cruz County, and this is data from 2019, there were 10,000 low-income renter households that were spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And there's a national standard promulgated by HUG that when you have to spend more than 30% of your income on housing, you're more at risk of having challenges related to your housing. There's a higher level of you're spending more than 50% of your income toward housing, that's considered severely housing cost or rent burden, and that's the group... housing, that's considered severely housing cost or rent burdened. And that's the group that's the most likely to lose their homes from an event that puts stress, stress on the family or the household. And that's the group where we want to close that housing affordability gap the most. So if we want, if we were able to pull out a magic wand and create as much affordable housing as we needed, we would need 10,150 new affordable housing units in the county as a whole. And you'll see later that our housing goals are much more modest than that. But that, that's the dream. The group of folks who are much more likely to experience homelessness are households that are categorized extremely low income, often that's seniors, people with disabilities, students, people working minimum wage jobs. That's the group that's most at risk of losing their housing in the high-cost market like Santa Cruz. And that's the group that you can see is the most likely to be severely cost-burdened. So if we're going to really get to the root causes of homelessness, we got to figure out how to close that cost burden. There's stories that we, we tell each other in the press and in our presentations and in our private conversations, and, and the stories often impact how we think about and how we do this work. And there were a few, a few stories that I've heard in my six months working in the county that I think are worth us reflecting on and maybe changing the narrative or the way we think about it. One story that I've heard here in other communities is we've, we've got such a long-term housing problem. Robert, you just said, we need 10,000 new affordable housing units. There's no way we can get there. We need to do shelter now, and we'll get to that later. And I, I think we do need to get people into safe shelter as much as possible, but we need to do that with the end goal in mind. So when we invest in shelter, it has to be a smart investment in shelter that's resourced adequately to help people get to permanent housing. So we've got to have the investment in shelter along with getting people into permanent housing. If we invest in shelter alone, we will still have many people experiencing homelessness. So for, for example, in the City of New York, where there's a right to shelter, they still have one of the highest populations of people experiencing homelessness in the country. So shelter alone isn't going to resolve homelessness. It's the shelter plus the services and permanent housing resources. They come here for the services. I've been involved with trying to address the issue of homelessness in, gosh, six different counties in the state of California, and I haven't been in a county where I haven't heard the, the perception that people come to this community for the services. And I, I think it can't be true that every county has people coming to them for the services. The data statewide and in Santa Cruz shows that about three-quarters of people who experience homelessness lost in the community where they're coming to access services. The state also recently put a web, put on their website something called the Homelessness Data Information System. So it's a statewide repository of data from every county consumer of care or city consumer of care related to addressing homelessness. And they pulled all that data together. And what it generally shows is that in 4% to 10% of people who actually come in for services and touch an agency that puts data in their system have also been in another community. So I think the data tells us that the vast majority of people experiencing homelessness are losing their housing where they're coming to ask for support. There are certainly anecdotes and stories of people who've been in another community who've come here, but I think we have to step back, look at the big picture data to, to fully understand the impact. And if we're going to try to prevent people from losing their housing, we have to have a better understanding of who are the people in Santa Cruz County who've lost their housing, who've become homeless, and what could we have done to prevent them from losing that housing? And then I think another common perception is that because encampments are so visible and they can be very large, that's been the case in Santa Cruz, there's a perception that that's the full story of, and the breadth of people experiencing homelessness. And it's untrue in most communities around the state, that the people who are living unhoused in encampments are typically a small fraction of the people experiencing homelessness. Most communities, it's a quarter or less of people who are living in encampments that are actually in the overall homeless population. People in recreational vehicles, people not living in encampments, people living in abandoned buildings, their own cars. So I think we need to remember that, that the numbers of people experiencing homelessness and the diverse range of subpopulations is not represented just by the people living in encampments. This is one more slide. It's really dense, and we'll make it available, but one, it ties to housing goals and how the state of California and we at the local level try to track our housing production goals. Lee is someone who's worked in housing and planning and is very familiar with what's called the housing element and regional housing needs allocation. So these are goals established in eight-year cycles of how much housing production do we need at the local level for certain income groups? And I intentionally highlighted the far, the far-left column is for households who are living in that very low-income group, and how many housing units we're aiming to develop and make available in this community over an eight-year period. So remember, if we had the, the pure goal, if we were going to help all the households that were paying more than 30% income toward housing, we would have 10,000 new affordable housing units. So this eight-year goal is much more conservative of 734 units. And this shows that we're, we're close to the end of that eight-year period. And for the group that we need the most housing development for, we've got 76 of 734 units lying in Santa Cruz County. And you can see how the different jurisdictions in our community are doing relative to the housing goals. We've done a much better job in some of our jurisdictions in creating above-moderate income housing, but we've done a very poor job in creating the kinds of housing that really is going to make a dent in preventing ending homelessness. So this is something that the first for us to really track and lean in on, how do we get more housing for extremely low-income and very low-income members of our community? I mentioned earlier that we did a preliminary financial analysis, looking at how much money is coming into the community as a whole, not necessarily just to our division, but to the county overall, and how much is available, different types of interventions related to housing and homelessness. So this doesn't represent all of the places where we spend resources to try to address homelessness, but some of the major areas are outreach to connect people, temporary housing, shelter and transitional housing, the rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and affordable housing. And the blue shows the estimated on an annual basis, if we were to hit the targets that are listed on the bottom of the graph. And the orange shows how much we have available currently, and how much of that, that money, the available money is one-time funding. So the overall picture here is that if we were to hit the framework goals, we would need $65 million a year, and $31 million currently. And of that $31 million, $10 million is one-time funding. So I think it goes back to what Randy alluded to. We have to make some really difficult decisions with limited resources around how do we invest it, given the scale of the need and the cost to really hit these targets is much higher than what we have in terms of resource availability. The federal government and the state government are ramping up resources, and I think we, we will have some decisions to make around how do we prioritize among these different needs. I do want to say that on this graph, it shows the two places where we have the biggest financial gaps are affordable housing and shelter and transitional housing. And so as we're thinking about future investment, those are the biggest financial holes based on this initial analysis of what we have in the community. And then Lee alluded to what's in this first six-month plan and wanted to share some of the highlights. One is Randy and I and our whole effort being more transparent about where money is going and what kind of results we're getting. We're really focusing in on helping our guests in our COVID-19 shelters to get into permanent housing and not have to return to homelessness. So we're investing a lot of one-time federal resources to keep our COVID shelters going as long as we can, but also to help people get into permanent housing before we need to close those down. Focusing on supporting our current temporary housing programs to get better outcomes, so increasing the dollars and resources we give to those programs so they can have more positive results for the work that they're doing. I wanted to mention that we're in the process of changing the Homeless Action Partnership Coalition governance structure. Lee and other, the city have been involved with those conversations. So we will be coming back to the city council with some recommendations around how do we change the structure and how we, we govern this work together. We've been working with staff in the city on some encampment response protocols, trying to clarify city and county roles and responsibilities, and I think we're making good progress there. There's some additional funding available at the state. $12 billion is proposed, and there's a particular category of money called Project Home Key to help us acquire properties and to make them available quickly as either temporary or permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness. So there's some real opportunities for us in Santa Cruz to identify some sites before the next funding round becomes available. There's a term called getting to zero, and there's a national organization called Community Solutions that has promoted a data-informed coalition-building model for getting the number of people in certain subpopulations experiencing homelessness down to zero. So Santa Cruz County has been a part of that effort, particularly around veterans. And we also are really committed to working to make sure there are no families experiencing homelessness. Also included that in his proposed budget. So there are the work groups where people who are working with those subpopulations get together and try to unite our and integrate our efforts to look at the data and make it, make it possible for us to get to a place where no one experiences homelessness for more than 30 days. And then having more data available. So there's the state database. Our team helps shift some of our data up to the state so people can look at some of that data. But we also want to make it available locally for people to see what's happening with our investments, what's the demographics of homelessness today, how are things changing over time. So we're working on that as well. And we will, we engage with the city and other partners to develop our priorities for the next six-month plan. And that is the end of the presentation now. I'll open it up for questions from the council and defer to you all on how to incorporate public comment.
Great. Thanks, Randy and Robert. Really great presentation, and obviously a lot of work to do. And just want to really recognize, I think, Randy, some of your comments and Robert yours too, that this is a humanitarian crisis. It's, it's bigger than any city or county in six. Robert, some of the numbers you've shown are pretty, pretty sobering. And that, you know, many of these folks are, are, they are our neighbors and our kids and our brothers and our sisters and our moms and dads and other people, you know, they're, they're, they're from our community. And I think that's really important for people to understand, and that for years, we just have not invested in the care piece of it, and we also haven't invested in the infrastructure piece, you know, to distribute best ability for people to have homes across our community. So we're catching up on decades of both of those issues, and we're unfortunately living that experience, and the folks who are experiencing, living that experience as well. So I'll go ahead and open up to questions or comments from council. And then for those of you who are here tonight from the public, we will be having public comment on this. And I did receive one request for extra time, and we'll grant, definitely will be granting that during, during the public comment time. So for now, I'll open it up to council. And again, the, the motion for tonight is, is to accept this report. We're not taking, you know, action on any kind of funding, or as, you know, was outlined earlier, this is really a acceptance of the report and a chance for council to really check in regarding, regarding the report contents and, and tonight. So I see, let me get my list up here. My iPad, which is a little different. Okay, Council Member Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Robert and Randy, for that presentation. You know, a lot of those data points really highlight some, you know, important things we need to take into consideration around, like what, what's going to be needed in order to address this. And, you know, I think Mayor, you know, highlighted, you know, the fact that a lot of these people are from our community. And so, you know, while many people may think that people are coming from different parts of the country for the services, a lot of the people accessing the services are people who became homeless in our community, have been in our community. One thing that came up the last meeting, but during COVID, for example, the, the county was able to put up a website where people could go and find information about how to connect homeless people to resources. I was just wondering if you all are going to be, if there's a website now up for, you know, all this work with more information how people can access services and what services are available, or if that's kind of in the works.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question. I, I would say there are websites, but it's still in the works. It's not to the degree that I would like it to be at. So the Homeless Action Partnership has a, a link to how to get help, and the County Human Services Department also has that same link. One of the, the big things I think we're going to focus on at six-month plan is what I call the kind of front door to services, or how we bring services to people and how we make the community aware of what's available. So I appreciate you raising it. I think we can do better. There's, there's a lot of free guides and things out there that we're not keeping up to date. So that, that's something that I think we really need to work on. We have information up there now. I think we can learn from the, the COVID approach that was taken to build out something that's going to last.
I want to, I'd like to piggyback by choosing to take your question, Council Member Cummings, Robert's answer, to circle back to what we're focused on in the first six months, and that's transparency. This is a super confusing issue, and it's hard to understand where the money's going with. One of the things Robert and I want to accomplish is being very honest with elected officials and the community about where we're putting our money. And I just wanted to use the moment to say, it's complicated to figure out whether to take new money, invest in administrative infrastructure that's needed to run the backbone of these systems, because then that's money not going to direct services. And I think Robert and I are much more interested in decision points to elected bodies and to the community in full transparency, so we can together make those decisions. But I just kind of want to take the moment to say, Robert and I have had a career where we've been in well-resourced infrastructures and poorly-resourced infrastructures. And it's never popular to say, please pay for more government people. But when you don't have enough people, you just sometimes can't get the systems in place to have the data, to have answering the phone. So our interest is just bring back to people when we have money, when we're making those choices, so people understand why. And then people can hold us accountable months ahead to say, okay, we approved, like our board approved the hiring of two analysts. We haven't hired them yet, but we're going to then deliver to the board when we're back in front of the board. When we hire these analysts, this is what they're doing that we couldn't do before. So I just want to use that moment to say, we have many decision points, and one is better resourcing ourselves to deliver on, on this complex program, not just everything Robert listed. I hope that's helpful, but that's something we're grappling with. But I wanted to highlight the process we're hoping to go through, to be very honest about the process.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you. And then just kind of a side question. Will we have access to slides from tonight? Is there any way we can have those sent to us?
After I just said transparency, I better, we better answer that yes. I think we have it, or if we doesn't, would we be right to send it to Lee? Is that right?
Oh, I'll send it to Lee and to Bonnie.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, make sure Bonnie gets it, and that way we'll, we'll get distributed. Okay. Next, I have Councilmember Golda.
Thank you guys so much for bringing this presentation for us, and thanks for acknowledging too, that it, that it will take a partnership and that it's more than the city and the county can deal with, because I know it's, you know, not just a state, but a national issue. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, you said the goal was 600 beds, Robert, and we're at, and we're currently at 440 pre-COVID. What were we at during COVID? Because I know you set up some, you know, temporary spots with the one-time funding.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember. If everything was perfect, we could have had 1,000 beds, but we never got to perfect. And of the 1,000, some of those beds were set aside specifically for people who were exposed to COVID or came into contact. So they weren't necessarily for people experiencing homelessness. So the maximum we had that were available for folks experiencing homelessness was essentially double. I think we were around 880 beds. Can imagine that that's a huge reduction that's going to happen when the COVID funding comes to an end. And that's why this first six months, we're really focused on what we've been calling the rehousing wave, to help as many of those guests as possible get on a path to permanent housing. And overall, I think at the end of And overall, I think at the end of the pandemic, we will see that the overall effort, which we're hoping to get reimbursed by FEMA for, is in the neighborhood of 40 hours in shelter and food. So there's this amazing emergency response that's allowed us to get people indoors, but it's one-time emergency only. So if we could sustain that level of investment over the long haul, we'd really see the results that we need to get to.
Okay, so another question and something else that I totally, you know, resonates with me is that it's way easier to prevent somebody from losing their home than to get them back into housing, obviously. And just knowing that like middle-income people like myself typically pay like 50% of our combined salary, family income or whatever towards our housing, even if people have become unhoused, living in our county, is there any, our county and other counties? Because it's really difficult to get back on your feet, knowing how expensive it is here. So like, you know, other counties where the cost of living maybe isn't so high, where somebody would have an opportunity to rent something that's a little, you know, less expensive. Is there any collaboration between counties at the state level? Yes?
Yeah, another, another great question. So I was working in the San Francisco Bay area and there was a nonprofit called All Home California that's trying to create that county-to-county regional collaboration. And because I'm aware of the leaders, they're, they're really interested in incorporating Santa Cruz into that. We're, we're in between two bays. We have some of the Silicon Valley-related stuff happening in Santa Cruz, but we're also in the moderate. So yes, there are efforts to try to get coordination across counties. And the data system that the state pulled together is so that at the state level, we can start to look at trends between counties. I think your question also gets to when, when you're having a conversation with somebody one-on-one about, and I can relate to this personally as well, about where do you want to live and where are you willing to live? There are difficult choices you have to make based on the income that you have at the moment, the availability of housing, the cost of that housing. So I think part of our work to help people experiencing homelessness is to have that conversation with them and be realistic about the current housing market and the trade-offs. Because often if you, if you grew up in Santa, family's here, your roots are here, your services are here, things that matter to you are here, but there isn't a place that you can afford, that's the kind of conversation that our frontline staff are having to have with people. And folks make, we all make our own choices about what makes the most sense for us at a given time. But absolutely, that's got to be part of the conversation, trying to help people weigh those trade-offs. And, you know, and you go, can you, can we help you either through applying for the limited affordable housing or employment or living with others? Or are there places where you could relocate to be with family or friends or find something more affordable? That's all really need to be, it all needs to be on the table. And I hope that across the state, we can do a better job of hitting arena housing goals, because frankly, this is an issue. And if the state also has a website where they're tracking those housing element goals statewide, and it doesn't look good, that as a state, we're not doing a good job of hitting our targets. And the group that we're doing the poorest in developing housing for is the group that's the most likely to be homeless. So statewide, we, I mean, even though some of our neighboring counties might have some more affordable housing stock, it's still quite limited. So it's something we really got to push forward on across the state.
And I don't want to hog the conversation, but one final kind of questiony-comedy thing is that I didn't hear you, I did hear you say like, you know, a little bit about, you know, we're talking, sorry, love and protection, prevention. But I was wondering, I know some other council members and I are really particularly interested in investment in youth. And also, some of us are really interested in prevention of substance abuse before it becomes an issue. And, and also, you know, destigmatizing mental health. And so just, it's more of a thing that's something I think that's, that's council members and I value.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment and we could talk a lot about it. I would say that what you're bringing up for me with that is that prevention comes in many forms. One way to think about prevention is, oh, someone can't pay their rent, so let's help them pay their rent. But actually, prevention, if you think about it more broadly, how do we reduce stigma so that young people are willing to go and get mental health services before they're in a situation where they, they can't afford the rent? How do we do more education around the needs of young people who are students and how to support them? So all those things can be considered a kind of broader lens on prevention. And I think we have a lot of work to do there, but also just being more targeted with our very limited prevention dollars for people who, you know, they can't afford the rent. How do we help them address that and help them get the income they need to, to keep the place? So I'm with you on trying to figure out how to go upstream.
Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody.
Mayor Myers, you're muted if you called the next colleague.
Sorry. Next is council member Coltrane Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, I would also like to thank both of you for this presentation tonight and everyone that you work with at the county, at the city, for the tremendous amount of effort it takes to just get to where we are right now, to have a comprehensive plan that the Board of Supervisors has agreed to, that cities are getting behind. So thank you for all the work. I have some questions. I'll try to keep them concise so that other council members and the public have some time as well. You mentioned funding that will be coming our way and we've heard some pretty big dollar amounts. I wonder if you could share your thoughts around how should we, how should we be thinking? What steps should we be taking to make sure that we are ready to receive these funds and we are competitive to receive these funds?
Robert, can I do a big political cue-up and then you do the details? Okay, let's stop finger-pointing. Let's stop writing editorials about the other party's the problem. Let's stop creating tough talking points that the other party's not doing their job. So that's been the history. And I, and I really mean that, because that's public information. And I worry that the state's going to look at that history and say, eh, let's wait till they get their act together a little bit. On the positives, I think we are well-positioned to have this framework. To your point, thank you for the acknowledgement. I want to give credit to Elisa Benson, my colleague, who did the heavy lifting and passed this baton nine-ten stunt to me and Robert. So there's a lot of work. I think this creates a framework that shows we have a plan. And then a process comment, and I'll turn it over to Robert to detail. The May revise unveiled a profound investment in the safety net in California, profound. So it's going to be an unusual process between now and July 1st. So the process is, you know, I think Lee mentioned in his introduction, we are on speed dial as staff to staff. Robert and Lee get most of the credit for their collaboration. We have the two-by-two forum represented by your mayor and vice mayor, and that's Sonya and Donna. Now, we will be talking a lot to answer your question in detail as this plays out. But I'll turn it over to Robert, because there are some very, very key investments. What I think is maybe one of the most vexing and one where probably we need, if it's unincorporated the board, if it's a city jurisdiction, a city council, and that is if some of this money allows us to purchase a site in a city jurisdiction, you all as electeds know very well, Lee as the planning director know very well, the challenge that's involved in keeping on a location. So that might be something we need to really urgently talk about if we have an opportunity that if we don't figure it out and work through the citing issues, we might lose the window and we leave money on the table. So stay tuned, a lot of dialogue between now and July 1st budget passing. And I, and I, you know, and I do want to like not over-talk my comments about what not to do, but there's, there is too much of that. And I just think that's so short-sighted. It, it, it's not that it's not correct. There's been a lot of blame to go around, but it's just short-sighted the focus there. So I really am talking as leaders, elected officials, lead staff, let's really focus on work looking forward so that we're, we're well-positioned. And I think we're getting close. So Robert, you can share more details, because I have a piece of paper in front of me. There is a detailed list of all the investments the governor's outlining, and all of them are strategies we need to position ourselves for for future funding.
Yeah, just building on a few of the things that Randy mentioned, I think number one, if you look at the governor's proposal, a large amount of the $12 billion is for securing properties for permanent housing and temporary housing. And that relates to identify locations together and to apply together to make ourselves more competitive. I anticipate that the state will roll out the funds by region and not have it entirely competitive. But historically, the formulas that the state, state officials use to decide how to divvy up the funds aren't always tied to the number of people experiencing homelessness or rates of homelessness. So the, the bigger cities, the bigger counties with bigger voices often get more of the resources. So I think there's actually an opportunity in the budget trailer legislation to really look at the formulas and raise our voices up and say, you know, shouldn't these investments be tied to the, the need, not just who has the biggest megaphone at the state level? So that's one thing that I think we can do. The second I alluded to is identifying projects, physical plants, and then figuring out how do we really support them? And we have, as one of our recommendations, a housing and capital project pipeline where we keep track of potential projects that we can work on together to support financially. There is specifically called out governor's proposal money to help with addressing encampments. So I think to the extent that we can keep doing the work we're doing about clarifying roles and responsibilities and how do we work together, we'll be presenting our best face to state officials. And we can say, this is what the city does, this is what the county does, here's how we work together. And we'll be able to apply for those funds in ways that we wouldn't have been able to in the past. So that's another opportunity. And the governor specifically called out a desire to end family homelessness. So given the grant that our local nonprofit Housing Matters received from the Amazon affiliated foundation and our commitment at the board level to really address homelessness among families, I think there's a real opportunity for us to be successful there, building on those existing dollars in collaboration. And then I, I think that as we look at healthcare reform, I think this is not on the radar. I'm a healthcare person by trade. And the medical system in the state is also simultaneously undergoing a major overhaul. And a lot of the resources to serve people who are living on low incomes, from a health standpoint, are going to be shifting over to our managed care partner, the California Self Alliance for Health, Central California Alliance for Health. Figuring out how do we take our housing and homelessness funding in partnership with managed care to provide the supports that people need around mental health and physical health issues, I think it's going to be really important for us to be competitive.
Great. So it sounds like we're doing a lot of the things that we should be doing to cue up, and we have some more work to do. I have, great, I love the thumbs up. You know, you mentioned encampments and the governor's commitment to addressing encampments. And I, and I see there's a specific objective in this framework around working with city jurisdictions to address encampments. I, I'm just wondering if you could comment on how you see, and I know you've been working closely with Lee and company, how you see the, and city, how you see the county aligning with what the city's trying to do with, say, sleeping sites and transitional shelters and managed encampments? How can we work together to make sure these are successful and that they're entered into the, the individuals are entered into the continuum of care?
Yeah, good question. I, I think one of the things that's helpful from the kind of health and human services county perspective is the more consistency and clarity there is around city expectations of people who are unhoused and what's, what's okay and not okay to do, creates opportunities for us as outreach providers and service providers to interface in ways that we haven't been able to do that before. So if there are specific areas identified where the sleep, we can plan for that. We can figure out, okay, can we bring a mobile homeless persons health project clinic service there? Can we bring some of our outreach workers there to connect them into services? We also can get a better understanding of the people who are living in these encampments if we're coordinating more and what their needs are and how to effectively meet those needs. So I think clarity and consistency around the kind of city's approach can really help us on the county side. And also for us, I think, being clear about roles and responsibilities, you know, what does the city take on? What does the county take on? How do we refer people back and forth? And how do we coordinate and have regular conversations? We're starting to do that work more than I think we have in the past. And I think those are all things that are going to be helpful. I know they're really difficult decisions and there's lots of community perspectives related to the issue of how do we help unhoused people and also make the community safer housed and unhoused people? So I, I don't envy the task that you all have, but I think that the sooner you can reach some collective decisions on, you know, what the rules of the road are, it's easier for us in health and human services to say, okay, now we really know how to partner with the city. This is what they're doing. This is how we can fit our resources in to those plans.
Great.
I'd, I'd like to jump in and say something in recognition for Lee and your police and fire chief that I might get to surface on video, but if you don't, I'm still just going to speak about appreciating your challenge. I've been in this field of work to address homelessness with any other vexing issue. Often these conversations that lead to whose role and responsibility is what. When you're in the hypothetical, the conversation's easier. But if you are somebody who oversees, like your police chief, your fire chief, but when the rubber hits the road, if I sign off on this document that says I'm responsible for this, I don't got the money. So I just really want to highlight neither county health and human services nor anything under your city's oversight, unless I've missed something, Lee or your police and fire chief are hiding something, none of us have the resources. But to your question, I started six months before, Robert, and it was a mess trying to have a conversation about roles and responsibilities. I think today, and thank you to your staff and to electeds who helped us get to a place where we're 90% there, but I just want to underline that does not mean if the city says, yes, we signed a document, we're responsible, that we think you have the resources. Because we don't either. But back to your question, I think it positions us much better to go after funding to say, we have a framework, we know who's responsible for what, but both of us, county and city, need a lot more money to deliver on those roles and responsibilities. So I just want to say that to recognize, and I think the mayors have been pushing very hard in California to demand money to reimburse for the costs that are being borne by cities. And there's not a lot of recognition of that. So please hear as county partners do recognize, you don't have the resources, even if you ultimately sign off on a roles and responsibilities document. But it positions us to go for the money together. I hope that's helpful, but I think it's worth naming to recognize the hard work of your city staff and our colleagues.
Very helpful, and I appreciate you calling that out and recognizing. And I, and I'll just make one quick, it won't take up more time. But I want to acknowledge council member Golda's comment about upstream and prevention and working with the youth population. And just a shout out to the Youth Homeless Demonstration Program that is now being overseen by your department and the great work that they have done in a short amount of time on addressing transition age youth homelessness. I just wanted to call that out, because we didn't have a concerted effort prior to three or four years ago, and, and a lot of work has gone into that. So there's, there are some efforts happening with the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. I will go ahead and, next is council member Watkins, and then followed by council member Brown.
I too will offer my appreciation for your time this evening and for the important overview. I think you really did hit on truly what we're up against, just, just this really massive hu- human, humane issue with varying different populations impacted. And you mentioned that we've had success specifically thinking about our veteran population. And I just want to speak to that, because I feel that we really need to be aware that varying populations have varying needs and not everybody is the same. And people are complicated and the issue is complicated, so we need to approach it in that way, whether it be women escaping domestic violence or whatever the situation might be for the individual experiencing homelessness, I think needs to be addressed in that sense. So influx of case management, although I know you mentioned the challenge with hiring staff, I think will be really helpful. You know, I am heartened that the governor is in the process of wanting to really prioritize this in the, in the budget. I think that cities spend an exorbitant amount, Lee Lars, you know, mainly have often the county seat or have the, the biggest impact in their, in their jurisdiction, spend a significant amount of time and funding on this issue. And we need state intervention, we need state support. And as the arm of the state, we appreciate the county being And as the arm of the state, we appreciate the county being our partner in this. I guess I'll just make a few comments, and then I just have a, maybe one quick question. Because I think that one of the things we hear a lot about is the mental health and substance abuse and the lack of services in those particular areas. And wanting to see how, you know, our need for more services are really connected to individual success, as well as how it's integrated into our court system and kind of just the overall failure along the way that doesn't necessarily lead to a lot of success for individuals. So how to have that prioritized or where that fits in terms of resources? You know, just speaking really briefly on the comments that were made about upstream investments, you know, I think the social, the issue of social mobility, affordability, the shrinking middle class, this larger sort of national issue, how are we thinking about interrupting the cycle of poverty? How are we thinking about supporting youth, supporting children, having them with the best start in life to find success? So those are the types of investments I too would like to see as part of the conversation. And we also know that upstream investments really yield a great benefit as opposed to with the problem once it's already manifested itself. So how we kind of continue to have that as part of the conversation? I think that when I, you know, here sort of this conversation around the structure in the city and the role of the county, I guess one question would be, how are other cities and jurisdictions integrated into this conversation? As you mentioned, this is a countywide issue, this is a national state issue, but the city of Santa Cruz isn't alone or shouldn't be alone as the one city to really be working with the county on this issue, although I feel we have a disproportionate amount particularly of the most visible homeless in our communities. I know that that population, kind of working with education is different down in South County where you have double up families and a different level of kind of need or, you know, not isolated, but more prevalent in certain areas. So I guess, yeah, how are we engaging other cities and other sort of districts, if you will, in terms of really holistically looking at what roles we all play in this solution? And I guess to that additional end is how do we engage the community and the private sector? Because we have people say to us on a regular basis, what can I do? How can I help? What does that look like? And do, I don't have strategic asks for them, you know, volunteering supports, et cetera, but really strategic asks of our industry, our private sector, and our community members who also want to be part of the solution. I think it's a really complicated issue. I think we could probably talk about it for hours as we do regularly. But I'll go ahead and just respect all the time and leave it at that.
Thank you, council member. I don't know if Randy or Robert have, you know, maybe a little bit of a response about other jurisdictions. Like, you know, obviously, all of your materials really refer to the entirety of the county. And Randy, if you want to chime in for a few little bit here, that'd be great.
I'll keep it brief. Wow, you said a lot, and there's a lot to respond to. I know you named it as one question, but there's so many things I'm interested in engaging in. But I want to go back to something I said at the introduction, which maybe in California, counties and cities appreciate the flexibility sometimes, but for this particular issue, I think it ends up being a headache. As an indirect answer to your question, in counties all over California, some counties are doing nothing, like Santa Cruz County did five plus years ago before Carlos, which is to the vein of cities frustration. And when counties step in, the office is sometimes in a planning department, sometimes it's in a health office, sometimes it's centralized in the CIO's office, sometimes it's... So that just gives you a window to say, there's no direction about how a county should even engage in this. And then we know the city dynamics. So yes, we talk regularly in regional and state coalitions, and I think, and I'll turn it over to Robert if he has any examples. When Robert started, I said, is there an example in California we can turn to where the relationship is great between the city and county? It's usually a place where there's not a big homeless issue. It is a dilemma where there's no good answers. There are many, many, many jurisdictions starting to do like what we're doing, creating frameworks, and many, many, many trying to create roles and responsibilities documents. The fact that we can't find something that's been vetted and agreed and approved and city and county legal councils have approved, it tells you we're a work in progress. So yes, we look. I don't think we have a gold standard, and let's try to become that. But Robert, do you have any specifics? Because I know you've mentioned some other states that have some better models than California, but you're more plugged in if there's a good model in California than I am for this particular issue.
Well, I think that I alluded to this earlier, the Community Solutions Group that's promoting the kind of getting to zero. One that I'm fond of is going to find out where people are getting results. And so there's a county in New Jersey that has gotten to zero around veterans homelessness and homelessness among people with disabilities. And a lot of things we're trying to do here are what made them successful. But every state is different, and Randy alluded to this, in terms of how much state control they have of certain types versus delegating to the county and the city level. California is unique in that it delegates a fair amount of Health and Human Service responsibility to the county level. And other states don't necessarily take that approach. New Jersey is one where there is a lot of support. But what they did is they created an Office of Health, Housing and Human Services to kind of bring all the resources together. They also created some clear places where people who are experiencing homelessness, the front door, back to Councilmember Cummings, the front door was really clear. And then they, to your point, Councilmember Watkins, they actually were tracking subpopulations and bringing all the different provider groups and agencies together and looking at the data to see if they're making progress. So that formula for success is there. Randy's right that the ways in which people bring groups together to govern and think about how to address this issue, they're all over the map, from led by nonprofits to county staff to joint power authorities. I did want to say that this presentation is one they were giving to all of the cities and asking for all of them to accept and file and join us in the framework. And all of the cities contributing to the Homeless Action Partnership currently. And I hope we all kind of lean in on those housing goals, because each jurisdiction has some housing goals. So I think one way for each jurisdiction to show how they're contributing is, let's get to the 734 units as quickly as possible. Each have targets. So those are some examples. I did want to say a little thing about behavioral health, and we could talk more about that. But I alluded to Medi-Cal reform. I think most people are not aware that the state Medi-Cal reform is essentially proposing some significant cuts to behavioral health funding. So at the same time, we're increasing funding to address the problem of homelessness, we're cutting funding in an area where those services are critical to preventing and keeping people housed. So it doesn't make sense to reduce investments in a critical area at a time when you're trying to elevate this issue. So I think we all need to speak to that in the reform effort. And I would also say, on the behavioral healthcare front, that we're living in the legacy of a decision in the 70s and 80s, California was kind of a leading edge of institutions were inhumane places for people struggling with severe brain problems to be living. So we needed to help them get out into the community. But what we failed to do is to bring the resources that were in those institutions out into the community, and we're still stuck, we're still fighting. I often give it, I have a graph, which I could bring another time. It shows how we approached de-institutionalizing children and adults living with developmental disabilities, another neurological issue. And it shows that we gradually reduced the number of young people living in institutions and increased, and we see far less people with developmental disabilities homeless. That's the recipe that we never followed for people with serious behavioral health issues. So I think we have to elevate that as an important funding issue as part of this overall effort to address homelessness. So thank you for raising it, and hopefully we can all call our state folks and really push to not cut behavioral healthcare funding in the time we're trying to address homelessness.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And we, yeah, we discussed that in the two by two, I think it was either the meeting before or our previous meeting. So please let us know how we can weigh in on that legislation and those efforts, because we certainly will weigh in for sure. I have Councilmember Brown, and then Councilmember Cummings. If it's okay, I'd like to go to Vice Mayor Brunner. She hasn't spoken yet. Okay. If possible, I'd like to get out to the public, because we are starting to get into a lot of time. Great conversation. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks. So many of the questions that I had have been discussed already, so thank you to my colleagues for bringing them up, and thank you for your responses. I really, really appreciate, as we all, your presentation, your efforts, you know, I think that, you know, so many of the things you've said this evening really give me hope that we are moving in the right direction despite the really formidable challenges and resource And I want, Mr. Ratner, I want to really thank you for calling out this, your thoughts on the magnet, which, you know, seems to really pervade the narrative and I think is really debilitating. And, you know, so for me, it was just really nice to hear that come from somebody who works, you know, so closely on these issues and has this experience from different parts of the state. I also really want to appreciate the comments, Randy, that you started with, and I think the tenor of this meeting about transparency and collaboration and, you know, not blame gaming. I sort of, I call it externalizing risk. Everybody tries to externalize the risk of, you know, this and not, and externalize the responsibility. And so kind of just bringing that to the forefront is great to hear as well, you know, conceptually and principle wise. I do, so the question that I want to ask that I think has not been, is around this data-informed coalition building and governance structure, I mean, yes, we have been kind of lamenting the HAP, the Accountability Gap with the HAP for quite some time now. You know, there's like a lot of questions that people have, and it's hard to answer them when constituents ask. So I'm really appreciative of the effort to restructure that. And I wanted to just ask if you could talk a little about that process in terms of who, you know, who you see, who is going to be at the table? I see, I read through the Board of Supervisors agenda packet back from March, and there's a kind of a timeline laid out there in the different categories. And coalition structure, you're kind of set to be, you know, have developed that by next month, by June. And so I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, you know, affecting our decision-making and just understanding in general what's going on for the public.
I'm going to say something to start and turn it over to Robert. I will defer to you as your legislative body how far to go on this, because we are going to be back in front of you, and Lee has been very involved and has all this information. Everything we're doing is in partnership with Lee. I want to just invite, like Robert said, these narratives and others. The end result of the HAP system is what you said. It does not seem transparent, it seems unaccountable, and it seems to be a black box of Mr.'s money. Now that I've been here a year and I've looked at it, and when I heard that, I was like, oh, what's going on here? I want to just add to this, something I said in response to Councilmember Cummings' comment about lack of staff time and staff resources to actually produce what I well know was the desire of the county that I got here. They did not have the time to get the materials together to the HAP, to create minutes, to produce minutes, not to mention to put materials out to the community. So I just want to invite, there's two parts to this story. One is the governance structure, how many seats do different jurisdictions have? How are they appointed? But the other is we, which is now me and Robert, we have to resource the, well enough that we can deliver on accountability, and that's staff time. Getting materials in place, putting them in place, having a website, putting it out there, because I want out of the middle of being a participant in a black box where the community's like, what's going on with that money? There are answers to that question, but my predecessors didn't have the time to answer those questions, not to mention get ahead of the understandable frustration from communities. Seems like a ton of money, the county got $5 million. Answer to that, they didn't have time to, not to mention get it boarded and the contracts out, and there just wasn't resources to explain what we were doing. So that's a big piece of what we're working on. And then I'll let Robert share a touch about the actual decision points that are going to be in front of you soon, but I plead no, we're working closely with your staff, so nothing will be a surprise to you. But Robert, anything you want to add?
Yeah, well, I think that's absolutely right, Randy, that bringing people together on such a complex issue and being transparent and clear about what's happening with resources requires human, human energy and time that didn't exist before. And I feel like we are on a better pathway to deliver more than we have in the past. And I love that you read the six-month plan, so thank you. We actually, the way that the continuum of care has been structured here in Santa Cruz County, the Homeless Action Partnership actually has to agree to really dissolve itself and adopt a new structure. So this week, Lee is a participant in the meeting. We have a new governance charter proposed for the existing board that they're going to review and make comments on and maybe adopt. And it does include asking the different jurisdictions to nominate people to sit on the new governing board. So Randy alluded to this, we'll be coming back in partnership with your staff at the right time. We want the city council to nominate people to be, whether it's an elected official or someone else who pertains to the table, to sit on that governing board. I think it's going to take us a few months to go through those steps of, our goal is to get the new charter established, and then we've got to establish the new board. And I also want to call out that we're putting together some operational committees. I alluded to the HAP and Capitol Pipeline, which is a place where it'd be great to have city involvement. We're looking to raise the voices of people who've lived experience with two advisory boards, the youth advisory board that already exists, thanks to work of some of the council members here, and a new advisory board for people who've lived through life without a home, to have their voices. And then we're also looking for some key stakeholders in education, healthcare, and back to Councilmember Watkins, business and private sector. So we actually want to have a seat on the board for someone from a foundation or a business private sector person to contribute to the issue. So if you have suggestions, please let us know.
I'll leave it there for now in the interest of time.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Next up is Vice Mayor Brunner.
Thank you so much. I wanted to allow the other council members to ask their questions. And my questions that actually came up have been answered, and I'm familiar with a lot of what you have presented just through meetings together, which have been so enlightening and informative. I just want to thank you, Randy Morris and Robert Ratner, for the work for the framework, the overview, the background, the mission, and really talking about the housing affordability gap, the lack of supportive connections and various health issues. I'm hopeful that was the vision of what you call the actionable person-centered, including equity and inclusion, data-driven, the county-wide scope that this framework addresses is so key. And just to get to this is everything. And my question originally was regarding that housing graph that you showed of the different cities in the county and the gaps, is how the other cities in the county will engage in this framework? And will you be presenting the framework to each city in Santa Cruz County so that we can work collaboratively, not just the city of Santa Cruz and the county, but all the cities with the county in the county? So I believe that question was asked already and answered. If there was anything else you want to add to that?
We thank you for your comments, and I consider that a vote of hope that we're going in the right direction. Meaningful, as the vice mayor to hear you say that. And yes, is the short answer. We have already presented to the city of Watsonville. We present to Scott Valley tomorrow evening, and I forget the date, but it's early June we're presenting to Capitola. Like you, where we presented the draft in November, we presented the draft to all of those four city councils, so we will be back in front of all of them. And we, you know, we want to be as available as makes sense on a periodic basis. And we, you know, we want to be as available as makes sense on a periodic basis to keep people updated. This is all complex work, and it's, we're kind of in the crawl space, getting the foundation strong so we can build some more floors and porches. The crawl space still has some structural engineer problems we're working on, if you allow me the housing analogy. So it's not visible, some of this foundation work we're working on, which we hope is then something that becomes more visible as we have that structure in place. So we look forward to more conversations.
I appreciate it. And one of the things that I've found really important to continue working on, and I see Elizabeth Smith here, who's our communications person at the city, is for all of us to keep communication and information out there for us as council members, for our constituents and the community, and for, you know, we have a big community that is engaged, and it's a great thing, I think. It's also a lot. And, and how do we stay on top of all of that communication and education piece? So moments like this, this, more of this, I think will be so helpful moving forward as we, you know, go through this framework, as you are presenting to all the cities where that consistency is there and everyone understands the whole picture and all the pieces within that whole picture. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will go, I'm just going to check our, so we do have folks in the audience that, folks that are going to attend tonight, so that would like to speak. Councilmember Cummings, did you have additional questions or comments?
I just had, I'll be brief. I just had a couple of really brief comments. One, to the extent possible, and this I think about is that, you know, there are oftentimes people asking us about, you know, why don't we have more beds for certain things? And there are, you know, there are federal policies, you know, that, and other types of policies that keep us from creating more beds. So the Institute for Medical Disease Exclusion, for example, you know, only allows for 16 beds that could, you know, for people to receive. So I wondered too, you know, when some of these questions come up, it would be great if there's a, potentially even a page or information that people can access where they can better understand the reasons why we don't have more under certain circumstances. And I know, for example, people have been discussing, like, is there, you know, homeless people in the sense of when you come in contact with someone, the, you know, county being able to take down their information and share that with, you know, law enforcement or first responders? So if they come in contact with that person again, you know, they can say, oh, this person's in our system, and we know that they suffer from, you know, schizophrenia or what have you, or that they've been connected with these people. And I think that to the extent that we can, you know, if that's possible, but if there's reasons why we can't do certain things, I think also it might be worth having information on what policies constrain us. And I think that also helps electeds, because then that allows us to put pressure on state or federal electeds to say, hey, you know, we'd really like to have more of these services or beds, and is there a way for you to advocate on behalf of us so you can change some policies? So I'll leave it there. But that's, that's just something that came up earlier throughout this discussion, thought might be helpful to share and to take into consideration.
Councilmember Cummings, if we get to a place where we have information that's out there that everyone understands, that harnesses the, and I think Vice Mayor Brunner was speaking to this, you have a lot of energy amongst your constituents, which is a great thing if harnessed in the right direction. But when it's not even clear to constituents or you as elected, who has authority and where the rule was created that creates a problem, nobody knows where to argue. So they seem to come to you as city council. So yes, we have a common interest in just better educating everybody, and I'm learning too. Robert's been in the field for 20-plus years. I've been in the field of health and human services for 30, but directly over a homeless for this last year. It's complex. So yes, we want to help get information out so people know what's a federal issue, a state issue, a county. We'll own what's us and where we're falling short. So you can push on us and we'll talk about it, and cities. But we're not there yet. So that is a goal we share with you, and we have some work to do.
Thank you. All, I think that you all go ahead and take this out to the public now. And I have, Serge Cagno has asked for three minutes, so Serge, go ahead, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Randy and Robert, and all the work that went into this. My name's Serge Cagno from Stepping Up Santa Cruz. I support the strategic framework and appreciate that it's focused on outcomes. As we heard from our county partners, the federal government, HUD, is loath to invest in communities where collaboration between cities and counties is bad. I think we have to admit that we have a logical disconnect in our city's discussions of homelessness and how we are partnering with the county. I acknowledge, appreciate new services we in the city are looking to offer, but as we criminalize people being homeless if they refuse to go to available shelter, the framework sets out a plan of working to include people experiencing homelessness in the solution. We in the city need to admit that we're making the work more difficult by criminalizing and alienating those we are trying to serve. As Dr. Ratner went over in the framework, that some of the net causes are lack of connections and loss of hope and purpose. Throughout the framework, the people experiencing homelessness are part of the solution and their voices are included in workable solutions. Building a coalition for the key objective, authentically and meaningfully involve people with lived experience in system design and oversight, increase connections had in short shelters. As Councilmember Calentari Johnson referred to, the six-month work plan includes creating a county-wide response to managing encampments. This was actually in the last six-month work plan, and it started in March. But instead of collaborating, we in the city quickly pushed through an ordinance to manage encampments without community input. We also, a collaboration called for in this framework, which we say we are, we are supporting. I appreciate the framework, and I ask that our city gets beyond the politics and the finger pointing and starts to work towards a solution with the county. Thank you.
And in the interest of time, and Robert, I, you know, this was going to be an ongoing conversation, so I don't think, usually we will, we do not respond to public comment at our, at our meetings. So I'm going to go ahead and hold with that tradition this evening because it is getting late. So I will look to the next caller. And that is Skirt. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you, Randy and Robert, for that presentation. It was really informative. I appreciated it a lot. So now, knowing that 75% of homeless individuals were housed within the county prior to experiencing homelessness, does that mean that the city that most people experiencing homelessness are actually your residents, consumers, taxpayers, and voting constituents, and not out-of-towners trying to game the system? In addition, Section 8 of your Conflict of Interest Code says, "No designated employee shall participate in making any governmental decision which she knows will have a reasonably foreseeable material financial effects attributable from its effect on the public generally, on any real property, and any source of income." And just because you removed the map doesn't make it any less obvious to me that landowners, landlords, and the downtown business associations stand to gain a hefty profit if the city council effectively bans the erection of tents within the city limits. So once again, I ask Golda, Watkins, Myers, Calentari Johnson, and Brunner to recuse themselves from further voting and discussion on the camping services and standards ordinance. Their actions have violated the city's Conflict of Interest Code and endangered the constitutional rights of Santa Cruz residents. I ask councilmembers Brown and Cummings to render the CSS decision void, they being the only remaining councilmembers on this body who have no disclosed conflict of interest matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, phone number ending in 1-810.
Yeah, this is good. I don't believe the presenter for one second that homeless people don't end up where their services are. Sure, there's other reasons why they seem to be just here in record numbers. Maybe on a county basis, they did have housing at some point, but they either go to, or they sure stay anyway in the cities with homeless services like Santa Cruz and somewhere like Watsonville and virtually nowhere else in the county as they lack services. Check the homeless data by city, you will see that is correct. If we want to turn Santa Cruz into a permanent cesspool of government dependence, we would put lots and lots of homeless in support of services in this city alone. It has many times more services per population than the state already, and the corresponding correlating insane excess homeless population per capita has resulted to everyone's detriment. I suggest that is madness. We are overloaded in this city by any metric with homeless individuals. The services badly need to go elsewhere. Build it, and it doesn't need to be far, but out of this town. The burden of homelessness on the rest of the public gets no mention here. Why? This seems a very one-sided finger pointing to affordability is the main cause of homelessness, but it's expensive everywhere locally. There are many more reasons. There are a great many cheap places to live elsewhere also in the country. Those who would do nothing to improve their own circumstances may not really deserve much, also especially so with criminal activity. A cesspool of government dependence is not a future we should continually move toward. It runs contrary to a free people. As once dependence is established, our freedom is lost. If you enable poverty, you get more poverty. If you enable homelessness, there will be more. I'm sure the communists, who seem to come out of hibernation and force when homeless issues are discussed, will drone on, but that ideology is evil. Otherwise, it's a difficult issue that deserves action. I don't hear any specific actions mentioned here tonight, but since Gavin's trying to throw money around to avoid recall, be sure to get some of that. However, the data for throwing money around, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands up in the audience, so I'll go ahead and take this back to council for a motion. And tonight, again, we are looking for a motion to accept and file the final version of the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz Strategic Framework for Adjusting Homelessness in Santa Cruz. And I do see Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Watkins.
Yeah, I'm happy to move the recommendation to accept and file the county's strategic housing framework report.
Great. And Councilmember Watkins?
Sure, I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cummings, seconded by Councilmember Watkins, to accept and file the final version of the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, the county's strategic framework for addressing homelessness. And by, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, and thank you again, Randy and Robert. We look forward to a productive and hopefully very effective with you and the county for, in the near term, in the three years in this plan, but obviously also long-term. I think we all know, we won't get there in three years, but we hope to make great improvement by then. And so thank you for all your work on this and for your leadership of the county to put together a roadmap for us all to follow. So really appreciate your time and expertise tonight. So thanks so much for coming. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Good night, so much.
And I will go back to item number one on our agenda. I do just want to recognize proclamation, a Merrill proclamation that I issued this month, recognizing Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage, Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month pays tribute to the rich culture, traditions, and history of the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. And during Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, AANH, of all ethnicities come together to promote cultural appreciation and to share their diverse traditions through appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And although AANHPI contribute greatly to our nation, state, and city, we unfortunately continue to see heightened racist crimes and violence, AANHPIs. And on April 7th, the city of Santa Cruz passed a resolution denouncing hate crimes, hateful rhetoric, and hateful acts against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in all forms. I hereby, the city of, I hereby, as Donna Myers, Mayor of the city of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the month 21 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Santa Cruz in honor of AANHPIs and their contributions that have enriched our country and our city. So, okay. So councilmembers, thank you so much for your participation tonight and for the public for being here tonight. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, tonight.